We are recording the meeting, the meeting is, the recording has started right now. Any votes will be done by roll and Julia, if you could just start by identifying yourself, where you are, who you're with, and the reason for attending remotely.
I am Julia Killie, I'm in my home office in Hinsdale, New Hampshire with no one else present in the room. And I am attending remotely due to COVID concern.
Very good, thank you. So that is our legal stuff, so we're good there. I want to throw a proposal out to the board, this is something I've been doing on Parks and Recs to help us keep on track. Has been working really, really well, I would like to propose that we limit the meeting to about 90 minutes with the option to extend by half an hour at a time by majority vote. And that would put us at like, you know, eight o'clock-ish unless there's obviously something that's undone. If there's something undone, then we continue if we all want to. Well, except for majority vote, it's been working really, really well for Parks and Rec. And I know it really can't work for our regular board meetings, but I'm thinking it might help with our workshops. So Jim, how do you feel about that?
Yeah.
And you're good. Julia, are you okay with that?
It sounds great.
I didn't think you'd object. Alright, so we'll, so we'll do that, so we'll just keep an eye on the time. And like I said, I don't want to leave anything undone, so the stuff that's undone, we have the option to keep going. But hopefully we just, you know, keep on track. So Wayne, did you want to kick us off or did you want to?
Yeah, I think if it's okay, I'd like to just kind of frame our conversation tonight and remind the board and our, and our public, wow, you know, why will, we are here at this moment to look at kind of some goal ideas. And as most people know, the board sets district goals every year, last year in June, we set, looked at our nine goal areas, which include curriculum instruction, communication, culture, personnel, facilities, finance, technology, and security. So those are eight goal areas. We were, if you think back to June, we were really putting almost all our energy into developing a plan for hybrid, a plan for in-person, and a plan for fully remote. And we had almost everybody in the organization involved in that area. We also didn't have a full-time director of curriculum instruction, that person that actually was getting ready to leave part-time. And we hadn't brought on our new position of a full-time curriculum instruction, we also brought in assessment into that position. So that was a huge improvement in regards to being able to combine assessment with curriculum instruction, because you know, the obvious nature, we also put a lot of grant. That position, we had already been doing many of the grants, but we moved more grants into, into that position. So but same time, as the year progressed, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Kat Blafman, started to observe and note things that she wanted to get into a more fleshed out goal in the area of curriculum instruction. All we did is we, we looked at professional development and our commitment to professional learning communities and our commitment to the personalized learning ELO. We didn't really dive, dive at all into, you know, major curriculum areas that most people look at as core curriculum. So we thought, well, we can deal with that when we get closer to the next goal setting. And today Kat's going to take us through her ideas or observations. And hopefully at the end of that time, the board will accept her report. And if we move forward, we might consider a task force that would have two board members, representatives from the various groups in our school system. And they could kind of get into the deep dive and write this, make sure the school goals lined up with our district goals. So right now, I mean, if you look at Kat's report, if we were to go through every idea, try to determine how to operationalize it in a very complicated system tonight, I don't think we would likely succeed. Now, one reason that we, that I was eager to get this conversation going rather than wait until June, when we typically do all our goals, is we have more grant money than in my career, which as most of you know, it's been long. Never seen this kind of grant money. So you know, we had the CARES Act, 179,000, you know, that was the SER2, which you'll hear in the SER a lot, that's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act. So that was the SER1. Then the state gave us like 101,000 in mid-October to take care of all of our PPE and any other issues with sanitation and air, all of that. So then we got the Recovery Act money, which we just found, just came available two weeks ago. And that's 857,000. So if we have until September 23, but any of the money that's not spent then goes back to the state to be reallocated to other districts. Likely to be some district that'll go through other money, so there might be another release of some much less than 857. And then just recently, the commissioner announced that our SER3, which is called ARC, it's the American Rescue Plan money, would be coming to us by the end of May, in fact legally you have to get it to, by coming to us, doesn't come to our bank account, it's available to us to write proposals under these long list of about 15 or 20. You need it for this, you need it for that, you need it for this. And that is 1,999,000. My guess is that will be September 24. So now we're talking about a million dollars over the course of a few years. We also had the 250,000 for the ELO project, or that we have five years, since 50,000 a year. We're all also looking at a PEE project of 100,000, it looks like it's almost guaranteed, just submit the paperwork and show where you. So there are just a lot of money coming our way, which means that any work we do, just plan for summer PD, for, you know, any people we might want to bring in, any experts we might want to bring in, any programming we might want to have available for the fall, the quicker we come up with some kind of general directions, the better we could do that. And I think what Kat will, will take us through tonight are her recommendations as far as those directions. And if you agree, then it kind of gives us the go-ahead to begin to think how we might use this money. The plan is at the April board meeting, April 14th, to bring kind of a framework for the 857,000, here's where it might go. Technology is obviously a big part of it, catch-up learning, big part of it, social emotional learning, big part of it, PD, any PD that we provide, big part of it. And there are a number of other caveats that I'm kind of surprised by, but I'll outline those in my report coming up for you in two weeks. So this is unprecedented, you know, we want to do, we do have needs that where we could utilize the funds to appropriately target the needs, but at the same time, we have a staff that is amazing that they've come through this incredible March of 2020, 2021 school year. Thankfully, by the end of April, vacation will have about 90% of the staff will have had their second vaccine. So there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but people are tired. And then when we did a kind of a straw poll, who wants to work, you know, summer PD, that's
I was gonna say, I've got to imagine it can't be a big number. Everyone's, everyone's exhausted.
And, you know, they've been anxious all year, kids are anxious, families are anxious, the relationships among the, you know, the collegial relationships are a bit frayed, it's my effect. You know, people are just not looking at the, you know, zippity-doo-dah world, this doesn't seem to be part of this COVID pandemic experience. And every time people turn on the news, it's always something that seems to be worse. So we're going to have to be careful how we engage our staff, and we have to be as supportive as we can in how to move forward, because we certainly want to complete our mission with kids and provide the best education we can provide for them. And we don't want to burn out our educators. They really, I'll tell you, the amazing being able to do the remote plus the in-person and all of the mix of. We haven't had to shut down like a lot of schools, other than just having a case in our, in our school. So we are really fortunate to have these people working for us and with us. So we want to continue to support them. And that means we need to help them see the vision that we helped evolve and get their commitment. And without their participation, those goals, the strategic district goals really are, they don't mean much if they just don't speak. So that'll be the hard part, it will be the implementation. And the action plans will happen at the, in school level, which will include, you know, here's a timeline, here's the metric, here's how we know we've made this, here are people responsible, and that can be reported now into the board, and I'm sure Kat will include that in her report. So that's kind of the quick overview. I mean, the good news is we hit up a lot of money. Bad news is we have a tired organization at this point. So, but hopefully, you know, Kat, you can help, help us kind of understand what we can do, and maybe your idea of a timeline, and I know you created a lot of information, so it's up to you to kind of take us through it, and we'll take questions and answers. You want them at, in each section?
I thought it would make sense to go through each section and have you ask questions maybe as we go through this. My goal, first of all, I just really want to say that Hinsdale is a truly amazing town. This is really a town that cares about its children. And I've seen that the way the town really supports the schools, whether everybody works together to support the kids from the ELOs, the sports teams, the way that the funding is provided for the, the new addition to the elementary school, I think it's just really evident. And I really want to highlight that, I feel like as a parent, I felt that as had the privilege of bringing my daughter into this town, and I'm really grateful for that. And what I would like to do for the kids in town is to make sure that they all have equal opportunities to learn and to achieve at a high level. So I took the apprenticeship model, which you agreed this aligned with your vision in terms of what you wanted, and then tried to create some action steps around that to actually make that a reality. At the same time, there are also challenges, and I tried to highlight those so that way they could be more obvious. Like, I know that I've, I'm not the first person to mention some of these. But I think it's important to be clear about what's happening so that way we can move beyond them. So I'll take any questions on the first page.
So if I, if I may, just for a quick second, I want to throw a little bit of guidelines out there. So I know when we very first talked about this, and you wanted to bring a presentation and all that, you said that, and I totally agree that, you know, we, we're going to have to have some tough conversations and ask some hard questions. And when I look back at, you know, when we decided to do a behavioral initiative, we kind of had that same conversation. You know, because we're looking at, you know, cultural things, and a lot of what we're talking about is cultural, and that is very personal to people. So I can see where some of these conversations can be very hard, and I can see where they can go sideways. So what I want to do is, if everyone's in agreement, I think that we need to ask the questions that we need to ask. I think that we can be direct. I think that we can say what we need to say. I'm just going to say, you know, nobody should take anything personally, because it's not a personal thing, we all have the same goal for the kids. And just everyone, please be respectful, because I just see some of these topics as, you know, potentially, like I said, kind of going sideways, and I could see some people going in a direction we don't want to go. And so, but at the same time, you got to ask the questions. So I guess that's all we're trying to say. So with that, does anyone have any questions for Kat on the first page?
The first page, meaning like the little overview?
Right, the introduction, page one.
I think it, like, for me, it's more deeper in it. That's such an overview, it's too broad.
Okay.
And I, I do think it lays out, I mean, for me anyway, I think it kind of lays out what we were asking Kat for, what Kat was asking us for confirmation, for me. Jim, did you have anything?
I don't have anything, no.
Okay. Julia, did you have anything on the basic, like, overview or anything?
Nope, I'm off that page.
Getting into where we are now and where we want to go on page three, the biggest thing that I'm recommending is adjusting the goal of the district to shift from the 40th percentile on the NWEA assessments to the 55th percentile. And I want to make sure that you understand why I'm saying that.
I was only talking about the very first page, I have questions on.
Oh yeah, no, we'll go through, we're gonna go through sexy.
I was gonna say, yes.
Yeah, we're gonna go through the whole thing.
The summer, yeah.
Yep.
For clarification, we were just talking about where it says on the page on the top, it says to Hinsdale School Board, I'm Caitlin, right? That's basic strategic plan overview, but we haven't gotten to like page two yet, right?
No, page, page one, and we're going to page three.
Right. So I'm looking at page three. And I'm recommending that we shift from the 40th percentile on the NWEA map assessments as our goal to the 55th percentile.
I'm not on page three, I'm lost here.
At the top of the page, it says where we are now and where we want to go.
Alright, so we're just looking at the act, not, we're not paying attention to the four or five pages that come before the actual strategic plan. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to. That's where I was too, yeah.
Okay, it wasn't just, it wasn't just me, we're not paying attention to the first four pages before that. Okay.
So what I gave you are data points from the NWEA linking studies. What they do, what the NWEA does is they take their data from different school districts around the country. And they will periodically conduct a linking study, where they will tell us a specific state, based on your data, we know that a student at this percentile on our map assessments is likely to pass, is likely to pass the state assessments. And if we have the graphic bell curve that Terry drove, just gave us, Andy Oria just passed that out, the 40th percentile puts us below the mean of the 50th percentile. Based on the data points that the NWEA gave us, when you look at Massachusetts and New York, in my report, I said Vermont, but it's actually New York, so that's a mistake on my part. But when you look at the percentiles, a lot of the percentiles are above the 50th, and many are actually above the 60th percentile in both ELA and MAP. So in order to have a benchmark that more closely aligns with our state assessments, I don't think that we're going to be quite as high as Massachusetts or New York. But I definitely think that we could get more of our students above the 40th percentile and closer, closer to proficiency. So the 50th, the 55th percentile was picked because it's just slightly above average and it's closer to the, probably be the state assessment benchmarks. Right now, the NWEA is doing a linking study for New Hampshire, so I could share that with you when that comes out. But it seems reasonable to me that bumping up the benchmark from the 40th to the 55th percentile seemed reasonable. Importantly too, as I was creating this document, I didn't create this on my own, I made sure that members of the A-team had opportunities for feedback. Given the fact that if we're going to vertically align the district, the elementary principle is really critical, so Mr. Bogu is going to play a role in this. Because it's his school that needs to align first. And Mr. Bogu is on board with us. And I have his support. This, there were conversations between us, I want you to know that. This was not produced in isolation.
And Julia, I just sent you the document that Kat was talking about with that bell curve.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll take questions on that.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Caitlin.
So I just, like, obviously, we want 100% of students to do well and to hit, you know, their highest potential. But I think this goal is essentially to have 100% of our students who are not receiving special education services to reach that 55%, because we have 20% receiving services. So I I think that is a little bit unrealistic. I think we should obviously, you know, shoot for the stars, but as an actual goal for our district, I think expecting 100% of students who are receiving a general education to hit 55% is a little unrealistic.
Thank you. And these are certainly open to revision. I think one of the challenges that I had was trying to figure out what's rigorous and then determining what's possible. Part of it would depend on the professional development that we give to our teachers and helping them change their instructional practices. Part of it depends on how well and how deeply we collaborate as a district. Is the 80% too high? That's an open debate personally, and this is just my opinion. I struggle between wanting to have a high standard and possibly not reaching it and have it become somewhat aspirational versus lowering the standard and then wondering how much we left on the table.
I think sometimes making a goal so big, it isn't, it doesn't feel like a real goal, it feels like I know we're not going to do it. I think it just, you might lose some vigor having a goal that is completely unattainable. And it's almost doubling, well, it is doubling actually, going from 40% to 80%. I don't know, I think if we hit the goal, we could raise it.
I was gonna say, could there be a staggered goal?
Or, you know, once, obviously, if you reach a goal, you get a new goal.
So right, right now, it's not necessarily doubling it, we're going from the 40th percentile to the 55th percentile.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not doubling it, but we are trying to get more students over that 55th mark, 80%, if we could get 80% of our kids, that would be fantastic.
Right.
Do you feel that would be better if we lower that to 70% of our students? Just as an example, so 70% of our students, if we could get them slightly over the midline of the 50th percentile, would that be more achievable, do you think?
I think anything lower is going to be more achievable, looking at some of these numbers. I mean, you've got some grades that are at 24%, so that's I, that's just a really, really large leap.
And, and I'm also saying in this report, that it is going to take a number, a number of years to get there. Because, yeah, because we need to vertically align from kindergarten on up. So we could see some improvement in the upper grades, but I am not expecting to see that level of achievement unless students receive consistent instruction that is aligned to the standards and we are vertically aligned.
See, and that makes sense to me, that you're going to see the results in the lower grades first, and it's going to filter on up. That makes total sense to me. You know, and I, and I mean, me personally, and this is why I kind of appreciate the different perspectives, because, you know, I didn't think you know, that 55% was, that number was unrealistic in that amount of time, do you know what I mean? But I don't have, I don't have all the experience everyone else does.
Yeah, I just, I think we also, like, really K-12 is important, but we really, New Hampshire doesn't have early intervention like other states do. And I think that drives a lot of.
So one of the things that we know is that if we if we place our Title I staff in K-12, if we help close that achievement gap earlier, then our students will have a more solid foundation that will allow them to make more progress going forward. So again, part of this has to do with how well do we align all of our resources to make sure that we are actually getting our students to the point where we want them to be. Other schools have done this, maybe not 80%, but at least 75. I mean, I know that, if when you look at the data that we have right now, in that, on page four, if you think about the minimum, just a random sample, like 45% of students should be above that 55th percentile mark, right? But if you have a district that's well-aligned, you should be able to get significantly over the 45%. So what we're talking about is really changing as an organization, this really involves getting everybody to be aligned to the standards and working in the same direction. Having our Title I staff working at the early grades, we know that's best practice according to the research. So it's, it's, again, it's that point of, to me, do I want to work towards that goal and do the very best we can? And see how far we get? Or do we want to set a slower, a lower goal if we feel that's more appropriate?
Maybe just doing yearly goals with the end result at the seven years being 80%, but I think having something each year to really honestly strive for is more.
And I think what, what might be interesting then is presenting this data, if we had a task force, how do we have some of these discussions about what, what is the data currently? And what are rigorous yet achievable results to have at each level?
And I think we do have the people and the knowledge to create those numbers in the district. So I would like, personally, I think that would be beneficial.
Hello?
Yes, I'm sorry, Julia.
I agree with a lot of points that are being made from all parties. I would say a seven-year goal is easy to lose sight of because it is so far away, and it is such a big number that we're talking about. Kat, you spoke earlier in your presentation about SMART goals. Generally, SMART goals are more nuggets, they're more attainable, they're more accountable, and they're more time-sensitive. So I would think, and there's also a lot of conversation in what you've presented about some other issues that need to be addressed outside of what books we use to teach our children to read. So I think that if we're really trying to strive for a true collaboration and unity as a school district and a staff, that it may be beneficial to perhaps what Kayla was saying, you know, okay, our goal, our seven-year goal is 80%, which is fantastic. It might be a little high based on the fact that we have a 20% special education. But as, if you're setting a goal for, for me, then as, as an employee, as a member of the workforce, as whatever, if you say, okay, I want you to obtain this in it, in seven years, I'm going to say, okay, that is so big to look at and so far away to how, we need to, we need to have check-in points or perhaps smaller nuggets, you know, the first year we expect this, this is our goal, and with an overall, I would agree that a seven-year goal, that lofty of a goal especially, is overwhelming.
So Julie Fenrich was in the chat, she said, our special, she was just updating us, our special education population is 22% at the moment, sometimes it is higher. We need to also consider our students with 504 plans. Yeah, I mean, we've been at highs like 30%.
Really, so I think.
Yeah.
So given that our special education population can reach 30%, I think having a goal of 80% is inappropriate.
So one of the concerns that I have, and, and I, I am certainly open to creating goals that everybody can agree to, that's certainly not, that's a worthy goal, and I can certainly get on board with that. My concern though, is that one of the issues. if we have special education population that's at times approaching 30%, that really tells us we have a problem with core instruction, which gets back to some of the things that are also in the plan later on, that some of our students are not getting what they need, and then they end up on an IEP. Where if, if our core instruction was stronger, I believe that we could probably get our special education numbers to be reduced.
I think special education is multi-layered and obviously core instruction can help, but I think you need to also remember there, there's just a lot of factors in special education. So, yeah, I think that as for our school board goals, like that end of it, I don't feel comfortable making 80%.
See, me personally, I don't, I, I don't mind, I don't mind having that higher goal further out with periodic check-ins, you know, in periodic.
Right, that's what I was suggesting.
Along the way. I don't have a problem with that.
Statistic checks or something.
But I can also see where, you know, unless that's articulated properly, I can see our staff going 80% what, what? You know what I mean? And I, so I can see both sides of it. That's, I'm trying to be an empty vessel and trying to listen.
Julie Fenrich just said, most of our students are identified with early primary grades. They are not identified because they have fallen behind.
Okay.
Okay.
Absolutely, please.
Usually the 80% success rate is used to indicate, is your curriculum valid? Is it, is it being done with fidelity? The benchmark of 55 percentile, number of kids reaching that percentile, I think is, is a little bit high. I would think if we want to have 80% of our kids reach a certain benchmark. Now, we formally chose the 40th percentile because that was what NE designated as a cut mark between low and average. That's why we picked the 40th percentile, and we tried to target those kids on either side of that. We needed more interventions. So I think the 80% of our kids reaching a benchmark is, is valid, but that particular benchmark, the 50th percentile, maybe that's something you could look at.
That's a good point. Because having above, having 80% above average, so at the 55th percentile, that's above average, right?
Yeah.
That is a good point. I think that's actually what's bothering me, having 80% of the population be at more of an, the expected average, I would feel more comfortable with.
Right. And I think, I think you could stagger it. So as years go by, you can say, okay, we've met our 80% of our kids are at the 40th percentile, now we want to move up to the 45th percentile. But you still want to target those kids who are not successful and, and what are the interventions that we can draw from?
Sure.
Um, well, I'm sort of off on a little bit of a different plane, but I was just wondering, like, from a practical standpoint, how does the COVID loss impact a possible start to this type of program?
No, is that delaying?
So we know that, we know that fewer of our students are past that 40th percentile mark based on the last assessments, right? So that's one area of concern. One of the things that I see, having done school turnaround in Lawrence, Massachusetts, having worked in other districts like Reading, Massachusetts, that was doing some turnaround work and Northwood in Hampshire, one of my concerns is that the 40th percentile might be too low. And the reason why is that organizationally, organizational change occurs within a Goldilocks zone. You need to have enough pressure or a high enough goal to get people moving, to have them change their behavior so you can begin to get the result, the, the desired results. One of my concerns is that with the 40th percentile that we currently have, teachers are, many teachers are still relying on their current instructional practice, which is often direct instruction. We know that cooperative learning activities are going to be more effective, having students carry the cognitive load, engaging them in deep conversations in class, like the Socratic method. That's what moves students. So the way that you get students to move across the percentiles is to begin changing your behavior as a teacher. And so the goal has to be high enough to create a sense of urgency to help make that happen, along with providing the professional development support.
Yeah, but do those Socratic exchanges tend to be applied in the older grades? Not, not really?
I've seen students in second grade create logical arguments and defend their answers like in mathematics. So you can actually do that with younger children if they're trained to do that, if they're taught to do that, which means that if you want the students to do that, the teachers have to be taught, how do I get my students to do that?
And I think that is obviously the preferred way, and I worked in first grade and they were doing it then also. Having said that, that was pre-COVID. So now, one, we're asking our teachers to be able to switch their lesson plans to online learning and to be able to pivot that way. Unfortunately, lecture is easiest. We can't have kids interacting. We're not doing group work anymore. So right now, the way learning has to take place is not conducive to this type of growth because it isn't ideal for anyone. And there has already been loss because of remote and everything. So right now, I just don't think we're in a position to move forward that way because we have, everyone has to keep to themselves. We can't share supplies. We can't, we're just so limited in the way teaching can take place right now.
So I just wanted to clarify too what my vision is, and I didn't include a timeline. I gave you this handout because I was going to do a PowerPoint, but since technology sometimes is a little bit tricky, I did a PowerPoint. Joe will pass that out. Sorry, Mr. Bogey will pass that out. So this will kind of help maybe guide the conversation a little bit more because I flushed out some more of my thinking. Our goal tonight, if we could just flush out a plan that would help guide the work of the district over the next five years. I'm not anticipating this work would start this year. I don't think that's reasonable during the pandemic. My concern more has to do with the fact that there were challenges in the district prior to COVID. We know that in, learning has been impacted because of COVID. And my concern is that if we don't have a solid plan, then things, the way the district functions after COVID would not be conducive to helping students catch up. So this is simply to create a plan that would help guide the work of the district, district post-COVID, starting next year, certainly not starting this year. And.
Yeah, hold on, Julia, just let it finish and I'll get to you. I, I saw you because Anne told me you were there.
I just didn't know if you had an electronic copy of what you're looking at, that's all.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that available.
Okay.
Can you show the camera?
I can, I can get it to you, Julia.
No, it's fine, it's fine. Thank you.
I'll get it to you right after the meeting is launched.
Okay.
My other goal on page two of the PowerPoint is to really discuss the organizational change continuum. The strict hierarchy where the decision makers make the decisions and they dictate what and how things will happen is a really good way to burn out teachers. And I know that from personal experience. I, that was done to me when I worked in Salem, and I've seen principals do that. And that's certainly not my intent. At the other end of the continuum, the flat hierarchy in a highly collaborative environment, there are schools that take a year to flesh out a plan like this. And there are environments where people have strong working relationships to begin with. And given some of the challenges in the district, I felt like if we went that way, we would not come out with a plan at all. So my goal is to kind of come to the middle, which is to say, let's create a plan that has some action step that we want to happen, right? So we're determining what will happen and then make sure that we have a task force or input from teachers. So that way, they can help determine what the timeline is, and that could be just slightly different at each school. So that way, there's clarity regarding what will happen with the opportunity for other stakeholders, including teachers, to have input in terms of what they need to make some of these things happen. Like, how do I change my instructional practices and what support I would need? And to create buy-in. So that way, you have this midpoint where things get done, but you're also reducing some of the stress. So that's really what I'm aiming for. This is not me being a dictator. This is me asking the board for support in terms of determining what will happen, and then some support in terms of making sure that we have a task force or some support with the implementation.
So I actually appreciate having this because one of my concerns was, you know, we, we have just, just two initiatives right now that we're really, you know, the board is kind of saying, you know, have to be done. We're not really giving any options on, obviously, the behavioral support and pace. And I was very, I didn't wanna, I didn't want to be that board that is constantly, like you said, being the dictator, saying you have to do this. You know, we have two things right now that we're saying, you know, these two things aren't, aren't really optional. And I was very concerned that, you know, I, I didn't want to have a third, you know, I really want the staff to have buy-in. I want them to have input. I want them to want to do stuff like this. So I'm actually really glad that you provided this. So thank you.
So because of that, if we feel that we need to adjust the goals or table that and have a task force create goals, maybe by year or however the task force chooses to do that, I'm, I'm certainly fine with that. I think that would make sense. But without any draft or without a launching off point, my concern was that nothing would happen.
Sure. It's good to have a starting point, I think. Yep.
Okay. Are we comfortable moving on?
Nope.
Okay. So the next step is just understanding the obstacles and some of the cultural issues that I've seen. And I'm looking at the strategic plan itself, starting on page five. I know that I am certainly not the first to point out that there are, there are silos within the district that make it hard to get everybody working towards the same goal. So I just want to be really clear on that. But again, that also to me highlights why I need support from the board or why we need a task force. There's no way, I feel like, I feel like the board has given me some responsibility to make sure that student learning outcomes improve. At the same time, I feel like without support from the board, I can't make that happen on my own.
And I, personally, I would agree with that. Jim?
Yeah, whatever.
Julia, would you say that was fair?
Agreed.
Okay.
So are we gonna go through obstacles or do you want?
If you're feeling the need to go through them, we can certainly go through them.
I have a lot of clips on obstacles.
Okay, my, my note on obstacles was that at one point or another, since the time I've been on the board, I think we've discussed every single one. Honestly, I mean, I'm not trying to, but I mean, we honestly have. And we've tried to build goals around addressing some of them, but I don't think that our goals have necessarily had, oh, what do I want to say?
The impact?
Yeah.
That you would like?
Yeah. And I don't, yeah. Yeah, we have, I, I think that we've tried to be with our goals very politically correct and very, you know, I, I don't know, maybe.
Not micromanaging.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, and I don't want to say soft because I don't think that's the case, but I think that we've tried to, I don't even want to say tread lightly, because that's not even the right thing either, but you know, maybe, you know, they need to be a little bit more concrete as far as like have some metrics to them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, like more specific.
Yep.
So I think that the obstacles are a little strongly worded, I will say. And I, I feel, I don't know, there, I think some of this is coming, like you came in as, you know, pandemic hit. I feel like right now the district isn't really operating the way it typically does, obviously, because we're in a unique situation. So, and a lot of the, you know, the ideals and the goals, I just, I have like how written a lot of places, like, yes, we've been saying we want to build trust within our entire school district, but how is that, how? How do you do that? Usually it's team building. It's doing things together. It's creating that community. How do you do that in the middle of a pandemic? And going forward, things will get easier with that, but it's gonna be phased and trying to build feelings of community and also trying to, you know, the academic rigor. And I just feel like I'm not sure how we're going to manage it all. So I guess I just feel like we need more specific, concrete, like how is, how is this stuff going to happen?
So I had some of those same questions as far as the house. And I went, kind of went back and forth on it a little bit because I'm looking at stuff like implementation and implementation needs to be something that the administration does. Do you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Like, we need to have the vision. But on the other side of the coin, I also saw, and this is not saying anything against our reopening plan, but I also saw that we probably would have asked some different questions or maybe even more questions had we had some, some indication of what the implementation would have been. Do you know what I mean?
And that is kind of what I ran into with this, like, yes, great, but how? And also when? So over here, trust allows people to engage in passionate debate. Absolutely. When will our staff have the time allotted for this to take place? And the same thing, it just kind of threw out, like, yes, that's fantastic, but when and how? So we contractually trying to make that time available. You know, it's just, it's very layered.
So let me ask you, Kat, you may have the answer to this, or Wayne, you may have the answer to this. I actually just forgot what I was gonna say. So would that be something that the task force would work on? You know, because, because obviously, obviously, implementation has to be you guys, right? We can't micromanage that, and we shouldn't micromanage that. We should have that broader vision. We should be looking at this and determining, you know, what those goals and percentages and stuff like that should be. But then if we have board members on the task force, you know, to help kind of guide the vision of the board, and then you guys are coming up with that implementation, you know, with us, is that kind of what I'm sensing would happen?
So the, the task force, this is my opinion, and Kat, I don't think we're really taking a deep dive in here, but what I, what I usually see is a task force is created at a district level based on board goals. And in this case, you're talking about your curriculum instruction side. The task force will have school groups that develop those action plans at the school level, which include timeline, metric, who's responsible, who, what, where, when, those worlds are right there. And that's where, because maybe the elementary school, something a little different needs to happen. At the same time, there needs to be a task force to see that the fifth grade students are, you know, there's a flow that end up in the 12th grade, your K-12 system, preschool. The task force can dive into some of this deep conversation about what would have to change. Maybe it's a cultural thing, maybe it's more time in the day, maybe it's bringing someone in to speak about system change. I mean, that could be decided there. I don't think the board wants it. But the board can say, listen, we expect that this is going to improve and we expect to be at this level. And these are five-year strategic goals that you have. You change them all every year, and sometimes you have to learn to take them out. But I think you, you can do that. I don't think you want to spend, you're already spending twice as many hours as most boards. You don't want to add, you know, deep dive in the curriculum world and, and start delineating every action that every teacher's wanting to take down.
No.
So I need to clarify, I don't want us to decide how. I want to make sure it's a, because I think this happens a lot. Here's what we want to have happen. But I think when, if this goes forward, I would like to see a more detailed plan of how and when, instead of these big broad, here's what we want to do. I just, I, going forward with like more. I just, I, going forward with like spes- more specifics, I guess maybe with reporting, like obviously that's not for us. To decide, but it needs to be part of the process.
I think Kat's report every month would say, here's where we are, would be smart goals. And the progress is why we're not making progress, and we're making more progress.
I think Wayne brought up a good point too about this. The change in campus, you know, what happens at that point between fifth and sixth grade, you know, things that are structured in a certain way. In the elementary school. Does that flow easily into? Or translate easily into sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade?
So to get to. To get to how. We get some of these things done, one of the things that's really critical is I think giving teachers time to have conversations. And I know that Karen Craig mentioned, I believe stated repeatedly that we need additional time for PD. In some schools, if you have an early release day once, maybe even twice a month, you're giving people time to have those conversations. To really think deeply about how are they going to work together? What are their goals? What will their timeline look like? And then that allows people to actually carry them out. So it seems almost contradictory that by having more time for, or a little bit less time for instruction. You actually get your students further because your teachers are able to work more effectively.
Now, is that, does that impact the CBA?
So what we're talking about here wouldn't be something we could flip the switch. And we do have clock, we do have hours we have to meet by state requirements of instruction, of direct instruction. So that could impact CBA. We are, you know, we're negotiating that next year, so. So that wouldn't be happen immediately without some kind of agenda, but that would be other conversation down the road. They'd bring a recommendation to you and then you'd make that call.
Okay. Anne?
And I've already sent the calendar out to the A-team last week and had noticed, no, Joe's was the only one that really responded to it. And I did, and, and I did send it out to. Anne and Joe were the only ones that responded to it. I did send it out to Sarah Burgess today.
Okay.
So we, you know, I just want you to understand that I didn't know then any of these days.
Right, right, okay, alright.
Julia.
Oh, Julia, sorry. Sorry, I keep looking down because I'm like thinking, you know, and.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I can't see you guys either, you're just full of blood. I guess I would, just to speak a little bit to the obstacle piece, the obstacle and organizational ideals. It can, and this is not meant to be critical or, or placing blame on anyone. It's just, to me, when I read it the first time. It's, it's easy to sometimes look at, you know, an organization and find a problem, right? You do it in a school, you do it in a business, you go in and you say, okay, your teams aren't working together here, or your profits aren't high enough, you need to do, you know. In, in every environment, there's always going to be obstacles. But I feel like when it's presented in a way with our current realities being every aspect being presented as a negative. And our organizational ideals, which, which are lofty and admirable. If it's going to, if that's going to be presented, I think it needs to be presented in a way that offers some solutions. And also perhaps does. Perhaps put more of a positive spin on some of our current realities in a time where we're talking about how hard everybody's working. Yes, we have organizational issues and, and every organization does. But to present a current reality and an organizational ideal that is so heavily weighted one way and the other with no real in-between. I think there needs to be in that sort of presentation, some real solid suggestions for solutions.
Yeah, I don't, did this go to staff, this whole thing? Did it go to all staff?
It went to the A-team.
Okay.
And also, some staff have requested it and they, they work sent it.
Okay, because I think as of presenting to staff, I think it need, especially if it's going to be school board sanctioned. I would like. To have that changed. I think that's. I don't know how to word this, but I, I think morale-wise, it wouldn't be beneficial to send this out.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's a challenge to talk, I mean, we're exhausted, right? Well, you are all exhausted, the teachers and the staff. And I think in, in some ways, I think it's, I think talking about the strategic plan and where we want to be educationally. And what we want our numbers to be and what our smart goals are and what those numbers are, those are very, very. Critical things to be talking about right now, especially as we approach catch-up learning. But we also have to be cognizant, we've heard a lot in the school board over the last several months about the, the morale and the morale and, and the mental health and the exhaustion of. Of, of our staff and of our teachers. And to me, this comes across as a very negative presentation. For perhaps just for the, for the times that everybody's going through right now. And, and that kind of, that, the first time I read it and I've reread it, that just keeps jumping out at me and I, I just am having trouble getting past that. This, you can say what your ideal organizational goals are and then say, okay, this is what, this is, this is one of our smart goals is to. Talk about, you know, our collective commitment, but we don't start it with five big goals and say. You know, ambiguity is entrenched, like that, to me, that's not the way to achieve goals. Through negativity or unless you have a solution that you can present when you present the, the, the current realities being all negative.
Yeah, I just felt, I felt defensive of our staff, so I think. It's definitely going to create a defensive response and we don't.
And that's counterproductive for what we're trying to do. We're trying to create unity.
Right, so I don't, I just don't want to present something, especially if sanctioned by a school board that is counterproductive. And I just, I would like to present. A plan and just not.
So I, you know, I think that as we, as we move forward, as we find, you know, the plan that, you know. Kat's showing us and as the task force works on what will be, you know, obviously we need to work on presentation and stuff like that. I just want to throw the caveat out there that. Anytime. Anytime that you're. Maybe pulling in. Anytime that you're really commenting or pulling attention to something that you want to change that's been a. You know, long-held truth or something that, you know, you just hold dear. Is going to be emotional, you know, so even if it, even if it's worded a little bit differently, people, you know, they're still going to have some potentially hurt feelings. So presentation, yes, is very important, but I don't think you want to ignore. You really need, do need to identify the issues.
Oh, well, I wasn't suggesting that, I'm saying that, that, that happens with, if we're going to do that and you have to do that in an employee evaluation or a staff evaluation, whatever. We need to just put a spin on it with not just saying this is where we are and this is where we should be and this is bad and this is going to be great. We need to then include in that presentation, and this is how we're going to help, this is how we're going to work together to get there. I think that needs to be part of, the solution needs to be part of the whole picture, rather than just here's where we are and here's where we need to be. And especially when it's negative and, and really positive, we need to offer that bridge as part of the presentation.
And I definitely agree with that. I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of, I don't want to lose sight of an issue because we're trying to throw flowers on it. You know what I mean?
No, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think really, a lot of this is providing opportunity for our staff though and providing time and. So I think we just need to focus on we're trying to support and provide.
Yep, I agree.
Things, so I think we can just kind of approach it a little bit differently.
Yeah.
So I think if you think about, for instance, the facilities committee. There's a group of people who collectively identify problems, prioritize and come up with solutions. It's a collective process. When I look at these current realities, my, my feeling is there, some of them are perceptual. And if you really want the staff to embrace change and work, they need to identify the problems as well. They need to have a collective perception of what is our current reality.
Definitely, I think it coming.
If you own, if you own the problem, you're going to help solve it.
Right.
I like that.
What I think.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would only add that I agree. I mean, for me, the hardest part of this plan was writing the first few pages.
I'm sure.
Right, because I, again, going back to the ideal, the ideal is to have a group of people work on that over the course of maybe six months. But given the time constraints, I thought that it would be really difficult to pull that together and have. A plan that could be worked off of post-COVID. And guide the work of the district, especially now that we have the funding, given the fact that our priorities actually impact how we will be spending some of this grant money. Right? So how do we make sure that we have a plan that allows us to spend the money in a way that actually helps us get the changes that we want? So that I have the file, I mean, I'm very happy to give someone the file or participate in whatever way you feel is best to actually. Make some of those edits or changes, so I just want to put that out there.
Sure, okay. Joe, you had something?
Oh yeah, I, I just didn't want to be totally repetitive, but I just wrote down like. Looking at the ideals, right? I believe in trust, open communication, collective commitment, accountability. And a focus on results that leads to increase, will lead to increased morale. I mean, who would, who could disagree with that?
Right.
And that, as you have said, the left-hand column of the current reality is not to forget, but. This is not 2021 to 2015, this is 2021 to 2026, like Kat says, it's a jumping off.
Right, right. I agree with that. Anyone? No? Who ready to?
Okay.
Okay.
So creating the future together, where we do get to maybe a little bit more positive. Right? What, what do we want it to look like going forward? Really focusing on, the section really focuses on the ongoing professional development, like having an instructional coach. I love being in classrooms, not during COVID, but normally I love working with teachers. Getting into classrooms and having conversations about teaching and learning and doing demonstration lessons or. Co-teaching with the teacher is actually my favorite strategy because I can see what they're doing and kind of bounce off of that. So that way a teacher can see what they're doing and how could they make some small adjustments in their instruction that would help move their students forward. Focusing on the PLCs, I mean, that's been the work that we, we brought in NHLI to do. So really helping our PLCs better understand what are some of the practices that would help them become more effective. On page nine, that, that diagram. The assessment instruction cycle, if we can get into that, we're creating documents. Where we're looking at what are our learning objectives and how are we going to structure our assessment? When are we going to assess? What do our formative assessments look like as our students are learning? What do our summative assessments look like as we're developing our performance assessments? Right? All of that ties into NHLI, this is, and the PACE initiative, right? So this is something that really works or really has potential to move the district forward. Thinking about how could we maybe possibly incentivize more of our teachers to go to graduate school or. Participate in workshops outside of the district would be another option. How do we? Help teachers kind of get outside the Hinsdale bubble? One of the challenges in Southwest New Hampshire is that a lot of teachers. Are really great teachers, but they're, they're not getting enough of what's current outside of southwestern New Hampshire. It's not a problem unique to Hinsdale. But thinking about how could we encourage. Teachers to go out and bring ideas into the district so that way we could move forward.
Anything?
I think it just, I, this is kind of, I think, the direction we've been wanting to go in with PACE and. I feel like we do a lot of national programs with PD and stuff, like the. Keys to Literacy, Trauma, Informed Practice, ACEs. I know I have personally attended professional development here. Like at Hinsdale and it's national stuff, so I. Yeah, I think obviously we should keep doing that, but it's something that our staff does also has had.
Okay, Anne?
Oh, I think it's hard during COVID to even compare what we've been doing with PD.
Yeah.
But I just want people to understand that we have 46% of our teaching staff have attained a master's degree.
Really?
Yes.
I wrote, we don't pay enough.
Well. Forty-six percent of our teaching staff have attained a master's degree. The Hinsdale Middle High School is at 50%, of their teachers have a master's degree and HES is at 41. And another 10% of those, of the people that are still on a bachelor's degree had. At least 15 credits above their bachelor's degree. And example of what the Hinsdale School District does to incentivize teachers to move across the district. If you start in the district year one. And go through year three and just keep, you know, working towards, at the end, you're going to have an increase of $4,790. As opposed to $3,446 that you would have on the salary scale that we have. And each teacher in the district is entitled to a thousand dollars of professional development a year. And between the ranges of May to May 15. Teachers can resubmit to get their, up to the $29,000 that we have. So the Hinsdale School District has virtually paid 100, almost 100% of our teachers who want to get further their degree. So. I think we do a very good job in that. And I, like I said, you really cannot compare what we're offering for PD this year as opposed to any other year. None, because we heard you did.
So Kat, is that percentage that, that Anne just said, 40, 50%?
There are, there are just.
Is that what you see?
So what I saw and. This is partly me relying on my administrative assistant. I didn't, I was not aware of, the data that I got was very different. But I would have to rely on Anne's expertise because I know that she has access to more of that information than I do. My question then becomes, if we've had. Such an effective program for PD or if we've had that much PD, then how does that or tie into some of the results that we're getting? That somehow there has to be a disconnect between some of the PD that we've offered and the results that we're seeing. So how do we structure our PD so that we, we can get the results that we want?
Yeah, and that's why I'm going to stay on the horse. If we were getting to kids before they entered school, we would be seeing better results, but New Hampshire doesn't have that.
Yeah.
I, I just want to remember, we're talking about one test, the MAP test and the impact on New Hampshire SAS. So remember that if we are a PACE school, it's really about performance assessment and our kids will embrace that and do better. So I just, on any given day, I've watched kids do MAP tests and depending on what they had for breakfast, what mom and dad were fighting about before they left. Or there's so many factors that affect those individual test assessments, that it's really about the whole child. I don't want you to forget that.
And they can just click through.
They can't.
ABC, ABC, ABC.
Yep.
So my one concern though, and I'm not disagreeing with Anne, but I would like to add on. My concern is that when I look at the data from K to 12 or from K, let's say to 10. If there was a significant, if students were doing well in the elementary school and then there was a significant drop. Then I would have to say, well, all right, this is kind of like a, a slump that maybe middle school students are in, right? What concerns me was that when I look at the data, it's pretty, it's a pretty coherent data set from. Like first grade up through eighth grade. So. I worry about, are we reaching our younger students, but also are we reaching some of our older students? I just want to share. I just want to share some of the data that we're getting, and I know this is from the MAP assessments.
But starting in kindergarten, they can click a pattern if they would like also. So that's important to consider.
So no dataset is perfect, and I'm certainly not about, having come from Massachusetts where it's all about the state assessment, I am not into data to that extreme. On the other hand, I think it's hard to dismiss data altogether because it does give you at least some information that's valid. And the NWEA assessments in particular, they have so much research behind them that it does make it a little bit harder to dismiss it altogether, which is why I went with the NWEA assessments as a measure of how we're performing as opposed to the NHSAS assessments. So I just want to kind of walk you through what I'm seeing. And this data was taken winter of last year. Okay, this is the fall to winter data. Now, what you would typically see in the first column is in many classrooms, usually if a teacher is doing well, and her students, his or her students are making years worth of growth, fifty percent would be about the target. You, you'll have some students a little bit over, some students a little bit under. But about fifty percent of the students wouldn't take the essence that has been and reach the RIT score. The way it works is the students take the assessment in the fall and the NWA MAP assessments will give a RIT goal, they'll give a score. This is where the child is currently at, and this is how much growth we expect the child to accomplish, right? The child takes the assessment in the winter. And what you're looking for is that fifty percent. Again, some students might be slightly over, some students slightly under. But you're typically going to expect that most teachers are going to hit about a hundred percent of their growth. What I see when I look at this dataset is that, yes, we absolutely have teachers who are who are at that fifty percent or in some cases significantly exceeding. But we also have student, teachers who are underperforming. So this is really the result of the teacher's instruction more than the students and, yep.
Is this just map testing though?
Yes, we're just looking at map. Only because for school turnaround, the MAP assessments are kind of like the the MAP assessments are the best measure that schools will use when they're trying to improve student learning outcomes.
So I think, so that was a very bold statement to say that if a teacher isn't at fifty percent, then basically there's something with their teaching. And I think if you need more data points, more sources of the data to make that assumption, I think our kids know this test has no impact on my grade, it has no impact on my life, I don't want to do it, it's boring, I don't like it, I've sat there and had to do this with them. I listen to my kids when they come home. So I just think we need to look at the whole picture and just using one test to gauge how our students are doing and how our teachers are instructing, I think is dangerous.
I think this is, for me at least, it captures a snapshot of data looking at teacher instruction, seeing the amount of direct instruction that teachers are using. And again, I know that this is during a pandemic. But that's why I went back to last year, the assessments that were taken just prior to the pandemic to get a snapshot, and this is only a snapshot of where, where we're at. And what I see is I see some really strong teachers and I see other teachers who need support. What I see is a district that's not coherent. That doesn't mean that we don't have good teachers. It does mean that we're not all working in the same direction. That's how I feel. I don't feel like this is a criticism of teachers. I feel that if you coach a teacher, if you work with them, if you give them some different strategies that they can use in their classroom, then the data improves. I do not feel that we have, I do not feel that we have bad teachers.
Just looking down again, I kept checking it up. Oh, Julia, what did?
No, I'm watching.
All right.
I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
But I would just like to point one thing out as we're looking at these and the gray level of these quadrant reports was hidden along with the school. Anytime you see a student in the pink, that is a, a student who has a low level of achievement and low growth. The student in the green quadrant is high achievement, high growth. And when I look at some of these reports, what I'm seeing is a diagonal split between the pink and the green. And that tells me that a lot of the growth that our students are getting are our higher achieving students. So my question is, if we're really targeting everybody and we're trying and our goal is to reach every student, then I'm wondering if we should have so many students in the pink? Because there are instructional strategies that support learning for all students, universal design for learning. Right? There are strategies that we can implement that would support our special education students, that would support more of our low-income students, that would engage more of them. And if we have that personalized learning, we would see fewer students in the pink. That's why it ties into the recommendation later on in this report that we focus on personalized learning and the instructional strategies that help support all of our students. So this is not so much a criticism of our teachers as much as it's saying that we need to provide teachers with the support that they need to change their instructional practices to help reach all of our kids, because that's, that's our goal.
Anne, can you send this electronic PowerPoint and the test data to Julia and Holly? Since they're not here, thanks. Just while I'm thinking about it.
No, I, I already.
Oh, good, okay. All right, thank you.
I've already got the staples.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, so most of my questions in this area, I'm not even going to ask because they were all house and CBAs and we've already determined that we could be working on the house and we're looking at the CBA, so. Jim, did you have anything?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
And I, can I just also add in that if we're trying to go more towards a PACE district, I think focusing on the one test is even less productive and a lot of what we're talking about is basically pace. So I think it absolutely, I feel like a lot of the district did was, we had buy-in with that and obviously it kind of fell apart with COVID. And I think focusing on that would be important. But I think measuring outcome would be more effective not looking at this because kids can, you can have an Einstein click a pattern. So I just worry, no matter what we do, if that is our only guiding post, we're never going to reach success unless, I don't know how you get kids to care about that test, but that's just my last.
I think that the best measure of how our students do is when you walk into a classroom and you observe the child. Honestly, but having this data is only useful in terms of helping us think about maybe what are some of the action steps that we might need to take as a district? I certainly would not want to use this as part of, let's say, the evaluation process with teachers, but I do think it's important for teachers to understand possibly where some things are at. Like, again, I'm going to go back to the fact that I've been in several districts where the math data is considered to be the gold standard for improving student learning outcomes, only because it helps schools diagnose their problems and think about what shifts they need to make. I will also say again, I am not a huge testing fan. There's a reason why I left Massachusetts.
Yeah.
So understanding the goals. I just want to highlight for me, I think that, and again, this is simply my opinion, my observation, I suspect it might be shared. But what we really want is to make sure that we're creating opportunities for all students. And I think that in many schools, there's an idea, certainly in other districts that I've been in, that the students who are taking vocational training are on one track and the kids who are doing academic learning are, you know, the college-bound kids are on another track. But really, we want to make sure that all students have the ability to achieve at a high level. So that way, if they choose to take a career turn and do something else, they have that academic foundation. We want to make sure that everybody has that equal opportunity.
Any questions on that? That seems pretty straightforward.
Good.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to say now, I feel like we're through the worst part.
Well, yeah, I would probably say that's true.
Interestingly, I got a lot of feedback on the first few pages, which again, ideally, I would have never created on my own. But just to have a plan to work off of and to do that quickly, one person has to do the draft, present it multiple times and take hits on what needs to be edited, right?
I've been there.
Okay. So the goal, what, what I found to be really interesting is when I asked people for feedback, I got most of the feedback or constructive criticism was on the first sections. Once we got to the plan, I don't think I heard a peep. Everybody was like, yeah, most of these plans make sense. Right? Most of these action steps. And again, I didn't put in a timeline for most of these. If they were less urgent, I might have added in like maybe towards the end, like toward the middle or end of the plan because there are certain things that need to take place beforehand. But I really do want to make certain that teachers have the opportunity to provide some input in terms of not just, if they don't have the input in terms of what happens, the when and the how and the support that they'll need in order to accomplish these goals. So if you want to go through those, goal one, student wellbeing. I mean, there's so much of this that we're already doing. It just really is just designed to help make it more coherent and focus a little bit more in terms of what we work on. So questions or comments on that?
Anything?
We're doing a lot of. Like goal one, I, check, check, check. I don't know about what sort of justice, but A, B, and C, we are.
Any, anybody, any questions on goal one, student wellbeing? No? Okay. Yep. We started a little bit late, so I was going to go to seven forty.
Goal two, student-centered practices. These are really the instructional practices that really support all students. Most of our teachers are familiar with understanding by design. I think possibly getting under a teacher planning, incorporating open-ended questions into the process of planning lessons might be an area of growth for some of our teachers, especially if you're used to using that direct instruction, right? How do I create a situation where I'm asking students questions? They are processing the material and then they're coming up with the answers possibly and ideally after they're having conversations with each other. But what do they think? The teacher in action and implementing instruction. Right? Making sure that students have time to work together. Those cooperative learning activities are just really critical for many students to help them understand what their peers are thinking, especially if they're struggling students and you're paired with somebody who's more advanced than you. It gives you the opportunity to hear what success might look like. It also gives the students who are more successful the opportunity to explain their thinking, which pushes them a little bit further too. And then the assessment piece is really just the assessment piece and student voice and choice that really goes along with the PACE initiative. But again, the, the goal is to just really tie this together for teachers so they can get a sense, a better sense of where do we want to go as a district. And I did, on page fifteen, put in that elementary to middle school transition. And I'm thinking that, you know, let's give it a couple of years. There's a lot of critical work, but maybe looking at aligning the elementary school more to the middle school and possibly thinking about, well, what's, what does the middle school look like currently and where, where could the, where could there be changes that might be more supportive of students? And the reason why I say that, I had this experience in Salem where I taught eighth grade math. And for years, we would articulate with the high school teachers and the high school teachers were always telling us like what we should have done as eighth grade teachers, not realizing what we were getting coming into us as, you know, from the elementary school and then up through the middle school. Again, that vertical alignment is really critical. What happened when I was in Salem, Massachusetts was kind of interesting. After a few years, the high school principal decided that they needed to have a freshman house. So the middle school had been divided into several houses with really supportive teams for kids. They decided to basically implement that for the ninth grade, okay? After a couple of years, they decided to do that for the tenth grade. So a lot of times I'm wondering if there's a an issue with alignment. Is it necessarily just one school that needs to change or do we really need to look at both pieces to make sure that they dovetail well? Just looking at the next one, create and implement a district plan to ensure all students receive personalized guidance. I know a lot of that is already happening now regarding post-secondary plans. But just making sure that maybe we have some way to document, did every student get a plan created? Like, what does that process look like? How do we do that? All right. Any questions on that?
I think this year it definitely did happen in eighth grade or is currently still probably happening.
Pursuing the four-year plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Academic excellence, that graphic that, that's in there is actually kind of important because that gives you a sense of where does math and ELA and science all dovetail together and meet in the middle of that Venn diagram? So it really gives you a strong sense of what does, what, what do the twenty-first century learning expectations actually look like? And really building that strong base of knowledge, reading, the writing, I know that Mr. O'Malley, you've, you've mentioned writing as being really critical for our students, right? And that's certainly in there as well. And grounding their thinking in evidence, constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. That goes between ELA and math, that's in all the subjects and being able to speak to that, I think is really critical. And being able to create an effective argument. All the higher level thinking skills that we want our students to develop are, are right there.
Questions?
None? Literacy and language arts. So this is one of the areas that's already been, I think targeted or has possibly been influenced by the fact that we've now got some money to spend on a curriculum. One of the one of the goals was to implement a writers workshop model for all grades, K through twelve. And one of the challenges has been that in Hinsdale, like, do we have enough time to get that professional development? To have a strong readers and writers workshop that would support catch-up growth post-COVID? And I don't think that we have enough time to do that, but we do have the money to purchase a program. So we do have the two programs that we're looking at. I just want to make it clear, Mr. Brogo, can I give you this one as well? The quality of the materials really matters. One of the organizations that I really appreciate is edreports.org. I appreciate them because they have curriculum specialists who rate different programs. If school districts across the country have had challenges meeting the demands of the Common Core, publishers have had similar challenges. So that document is simply for your reference. If you choose to read through that on your own, feel free, but there's a lot of research around the fact that the quality of the instructional materials that you select really does matter and it influences instruction. And I know that one of the best guidelines that's come out is that if schools are really interested in their catch-up growth, one of the things that they need to think about is making sure that the programs they have are aligned to the Common Core. And so looking at Ed Reports is one way to look at that. Again, it's not perfect, but getting that snapshot from curriculum experts and multiple experts looking at the same program to see whether or not it is aligned is kind of important. So I just want you to know that the two programs that we've selected to look at Expeditionary Learning and Witten Wisdom are both highly rated by edreports.org, which is a nonprofit funded by the Bill and Gates Foundation, among other nonprofits. So really making sure that we're picking something quality for teachers to look at. And then make a choice. So that's one area that could possibly be edited. But are there any other questions on that?
I agree. Good curriculum is definitely, I think, if anything, that is more important than probably anything.
Okay, Jim?
I agree.
Julia, anything on that?
No, thank you.
So I mean, we're at our ninety minutes. I personally would like an extra thirty. What do you guys think? It's up to you.
Yeah, I think an extra thirty and we should be able to hopefully, we only have a few pages left.
Jim, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Julia, are you okay with an extra thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. In math, we have a slightly different situation. We know that the elementary program is highly rated. If you do those reports, if you're interested in looking up them. I think you're being my assistant today. You've done a lot of running around.
There's a lot of material here and.
Do you want to just make a copy and we'll get it to them or something like that?
No, I I just, you know, none of this has been shared with the R18. None of this has been shared with you guys. I just think it's important that everyone has this information at the same time.
Is, I mean, is this?
This is the last one.
I think rather than do it, try and do this online, it would definitely be a come and pick this up situation at this point.
Well, I think Anne's asking, do we, does it go to staff and the board or just the board? I mean, is that what you were asking, Anne?
Well, yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I always think resources are beneficial. So, okay.
Okay. No objections to that? I mean, I can't imagine why there would be, but I just, I'm kind of obliged to ask.
I will email this to the board members, but I will also, I have the packets here and I will mail them out to them so they don't have to use their.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah, their ink and paper. Yeah. That's a good idea. Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, Kat, go ahead.
Okay, so with math, there are some assessments that could be used to help align K through two to the third grade. There's a huge leap in the third grade math curriculum where students have to go from the focus of understanding numbers in kindergarten and then addition and subtraction. When they hit third grade, all of a sudden they're studying multiplication and fractions. So if you didn't get what you needed in K one, two, you're going to have a significantly larger gap in the third grade. So these assessments and the activities that go with them could help close that gap, which is what we want. Making sure that teachers understand that that concrete pictorial abstract progression is really critical. That's considered to be best practice. There's a lot of research on that. And that that understanding actually goes K through eight. Focusing on problem solving was great is that the, a lot of teachers have asked for some PD related to problem solving. So I'll be working with the middle school and high school teachers on that at the end of April. The only the only thing I think to bring up is number two, adopt a highly rated middle school program. We know right now the middle school teacher selected, selected a program isn't necessarily well-aligned to the Common Core. It says Common Core stamped all over it, but when you look at the actual content of what is in the book, it's not as well-aligned as some of the programs. There are other resources available, are better aligned, and I included that in one of the packets for you. Those programs are actually free. So they're available online. Teachers can download, they can print, they can do whatever they need to do. So I think what would be beneficial is giving teachers some professional development so that they better understand the strengths and weaknesses of the program that they're currently using, along with the strengths and the weaknesses of the resources they could access at minimal cost. And then providing coaching for all teachers K through eight. So again, to help everybody align their practices vertically throughout the district and make sure that everybody is implementing best practices. So social studies and science would come a little bit later in the plan. I'm not seeing that as a year one or two, but possibly years three, four, five. Although I take that back, we have talked about purchasing a science program for like grades four through eight next year because we'll have the grant funding available.
And we have the space in the elementary school, I believe we did, right? The old art room, was that going to be for science?
It could be made available for that purpose.
I would definitely like to see, I think those are kind of the two that always get left out and I think it kind of helps enhance all skills. If you have a kid who really loves science, they're going to read, they're going to, it just, it helps with all aspects. So I think it would be definitely the sooner the better.
Okay. And then there's the professional development and teacher leadership section.
So I had a question. Are we looking to hire an instructional coach? Because I mean, we have many, many teachers, though, to expect one person to coach all of them is unrealistic.
So we're kind of in an interesting position right now. Because Ally is a very capable ELA coach. And my background is as a math coach. So my goal next year, again, post-COVID, is to get out of my classroom or my office more and into classrooms and actually do some work delivering professional development with teachers as they're teaching. So that's actually like one of my personal goals is to focus in a little bit more on math instruction where Ally could focus in on the ELA instructor. So we're not talking about hiring coaching, but simply delivering coaching as time allows.
Questions?
I just think it's going to be a lot for even two. I mean, I know we have multiple people who, and there was some talk in here about teacher leadership, so maybe that can be figured out. We do have funds, though, so I think it might not.
Joe, I'm sorry.
So we also have instructional coaches for both buildings for keys to literacy still. Three in the elementary school and I'm not sure how many misses we take.
With some of the COVID funds, we could also hire substitutes so that way a teacher could possibly leave a classroom, go someplace else, do some coaching. So we could get more of that cross-pollination across different classrooms. So if I know that my colleague is really good at teaching a particular topic, I can go see, or maybe she could come into my classroom and help support me. So all of those would be really great uses of some of the money that we're going to have access to.
That can help with collaboration too.
Absolutely.
Jim, anything?
Oh, no, not.
Julia, anything?
No.
Are we at the end?
I I believe that would be for you to determine.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm at the end.
Okay, you're at the end. All right. So let me do this. Let me, since she's not here, let me read Polly's stuff. And then I want to go around and get input from the staff that's on right now. So let me just take care of all these. And some of the stuff may have been answered or may not, you know. I'm not going to say not be, not be relevant because of course it's relevant, but we may have addressed during the course of the conversation. Let me just find her here. Hold on. Ah, let's see, Holly, Holly, Holly. All right, so she wait. All right, so she does want to get input from the two principals. So we'll want to hear from Joe and Anne, but let me just read what she sent me. All right, so she said that she will have questions, but she didn't have, you know, she wasn't feeling well, didn't have time to type them up, send them in. So I guess she, it kind of came on fast, so. This process seems to be moving very quickly. Usually when we adopt a new reading or math curriculum, the committee has spent months researching, meeting and visiting other schools that use the curriculum. Then the committee makes a presentation to the school board and shares why they recommend the chosen curriculum. We are at the beginning of the process and not at the end of, and not at the point of approving a program and the expenditure of funding. The SRT two funds are available through 2023, so we don't have to rush this process due to funding. And then she asked, please ask Joe and Anne F. their thoughts on the proposed curriculum. So Joe, do you want to go first? Because a lot of it's going to be starting.
I've only, you know, had a little bit of time to look into each curriculum and I'm relying on the committees that are going to be investigating it to, you know, to make a recommendation. And I, I think emphasized this before, but the feeling is to try to move more quickly because there may be competition to speak of with getting materials in hand. So I feel like in terms of, you know, whether or not it's moving along in a fast clip, yeah, but there's a need to move along in a faster clip than at other times. So now I'm going to continue as time permits to look into both wit and wisdom and expeditionary learning and try and see what I like best, but ultimately, I'm not the one in front of the classroom trying to teach it. So it's going to be driven mostly by a consensus type of response from that committee.
Okay. Anne?
So two Thursdays ago from tomorrow, we had our first meeting that staff was all invited to. Gina Hammett helped organize it in the library and Ally Magnet kind of relayed what the process would be. So I did participate in the first one, not the second one, because I went and got a COVID shot. So I think that's valid. I think it's very important for all the staff to feel like they have a voice. I mean, we want kids to have a voice, staff should have a voice and they are, they are looking at the materials. It, I do agree with the idea that it'd be good to find out from other schools, what are any schools near us using expeditionary learning with the type of population that we have, or are they using wit and wisdom? I think that's always good feedback if we can get it. I think that served us well in the past. And I think also it's important to look at just one area at a time. Our teachers teach across disciplines. If I say to them, you're going to have a new language arts and a new math and a new science, I'm not going to have any teachers.
Yep.
So I really think we embrace one area. I think reading is fundamental. I was, I was surprised at the sixth grade coming in this year. I did think that they are, they have significant needs. So I think it's important that we do look at this area and sooner probably rather than later.
Okay.
The other thing I I wanted to add about each of them is they've been developed with an eye towards diversity, which is something that we're looking at doing. I did read a few articles about some of wit and wisdom and actually school boards in the South were opposed to some of the books that are read in it. So it was like, you know, here we go, you know, now this is too diverse, too accepting or too tolerant.
So let's get some, I'd like to.
I just have two things that are on the chat that I'd like to.
Okay.
Karen Thompson just asked, just for clarification, can we get copies of the information of all the packets that are had as hanging, handing out?
I don't see why not.
Yep. And Teresa, thank you, Karen. Receiving all copies of everything mentioned for all staff would be beneficial, especially because the staff wasn't invited to the meeting.
Yep. Yep, I agree with that too. So, yeah.
So I'll send it out to all staff.
Okay.
So you want to start at the top?
Um, yeah, let's. And then we'll go back around the board again.
Okay. Bonnie, do you have anything? Paulus Knight, do you have anything to say?
Um, yes, I'm here. Just a few things. And I kind of went along with Julia when she was talking about the current reality and, and it just, I've been at Hinsdale for quite a while. And to me, it sounded negative too, the pieces that I could hear. And so that just makes me a little sad. And I'm one of those teachers that is not in the forty-six percentile that have my master's degree. So I kind of took that to heart going, wait a minute. I I guess I can't be a great teacher and relay my, my knowledge because I don't have my master's degree, but I, you know, I've been there for quite a while. So I was a little sad about that too. And I'm also a little sad that in kindergarten, and I can't, I can only speak for kindergarten, I can't speak for the other grades, but Reading Street is phenomenal. And to me, it aligns to the, to the Common Core. Everything I do and all the grades that I give each, each quarter aligns to the Common Core. I showed Mr. Bogio that. And, and I would, and I'm on the adoption committee for a new reading series and I'm on the Witten Wisdom. And I was also looking at some of the titles that they're asking the children to read. And again, I'm only speaking from the kindergarten point of view and it's not as engaging to me as Reading Street. So, so that's my take on this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Karen Thompson?
Yes, I I would just like to add that I feel like, you know, the PACE initiative, although it took a little hiatus at the state level this year because of COVID, that much of the work that teachers are doing right now with NHLI is exactly where the board wants us to be going. And I feel like some of this work that they've recently done, just so everybody is aware, is really talking about including their voice and their sort of their thoughts on what, what kind of a school do they want? What kind of a district do they want Hinsdale to be and where, how do they want to move it forward? So I I just put that out there because I think it's important to know. I think Kayla spoke to with that our teachers are really doing a lot of work already around some of these things that are in the, the strategic plan and, and that I think it's important to note that with them and that we're, we are asking for their input, which is critically important to moving this forward is getting all of their input in this. If we want to make this successful, we have to have all the teachers, a buy-in from all of our teachers and the work with NHLI is helping us push that forward. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank, thank you.
Donna?
Hi, had to find the unmute button. I, you know, I want to thank everybody for, you know, everything they've put into this. This is definitely a hard topic. We have to look hard at a lot of things. It's not always easy, but I do want to echo that, you know, the two reading programs we are looking at, I have to echo what Paula said, a lot of what I'm seeing for the text so far, and we're just beginning to look at it. It's not like grabbing my interest and, and I'm trying to think of it through the lens of a fifth grader. I do have a concern, as I do every time we adopt something new, that when we go into a more rigorous program, which is not a bad thing, that we often see a big dip because we're asking the kids that haven't had this in previous years to all of a sudden just be thrown into something, into a, a program that expects that they've already had the previous, like say for fifth grade, the previous four or five years. So I, I want us to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we're going to see some dips just changing the curriculum up. That's to be expected. So I wonder about a rollout piece on that. I know sometimes we've done it in a staggered rollout and just to look at things like that. I also a lot of, if we want teacher buy-in and all the staff, not just the teachers, but all the staff, we really do need to. and all the staff, not just the teachers, but all the staff, we really do need to, everybody has to be able to see this, everybody has to have some voice in it and be able to contribute to it for it to succeed. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Debbie?
I'm all set, thank you.
Tom? Jody Homequest?
Yeah, um, hi. So there's an awful lot here to digest, and I think without having the documents in front of us and, and hearing this really for the first time tonight, it's really hard for me to comment intelligently, so I, I need some time to, to wrap my head around what is being presented and to see some of those documents. But I'm really concerned that we don't take our eye off the pace ball. We've been really working hard to go in the direction with pace, and I think everybody's buying in and it's actually, it's pretty darn exciting. And I don't want to lose sight of that. And then from a personal standpoint, it's a little hard for me to see where the classes I teach fall into this plan, which is not always that unusual for me because I'm kind of outside, you know, these, the, the regular norm. But so I would like to think more about how that works for me too as well. That's it.
Thanks, Jody.
Anne King?
Hi there. So I have quite a few things, but I'll limit it to my top few. I think it's unfortunate, we're only looking at the N W E A data and not at the whole child. Our focus has been on social curriculum and making connections this year, and that has not been mentioned at all. I don't feel there's necessarily a disconnect between the grade levels. Our current math program has a very thorough scope and sequence that aligns, make sure you're aligned vertically through the grade levels. I also think it's not necessarily the program you adopt. It's about the implementation of the Common Core standards. And I don't think you necessarily need to have a specific program to, to implement the Common Core. I also feel like teachers have kind of been attacked in this document, which I haven't really seen laid eyes on myself, but from what I'm gathering from everybody's conversation, some of the things like we've had professional development, why are they not getting results? There's a disconnect. It's not a criticism for the teachers, but we need to change our instructional practices. I'm wondering where this information is coming from, if it is by classroom observations, if it's by hearsay, if it's by looking at test scores. And I would like to say that I for one, because I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but really pride myself on, on creating opportunities for all students in my classroom. We can't always have students working together due to COVID right now, would that certainly was a huge practice that we had. And perhaps we need to look into those supporting resources that we have, for example, special ed and the interventions that we have. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Diane, Steve? Brad?
Yeah. Uh, so. I just wanted to say that no matter what we do, teachers need the time to collaborate with each other. I think Hinsdale's a very unique school district. It's a single school district of a single town of two schools and we need to be concerned with what we believe our students need to be successful. And the best people who know those students are the people who interact with them every day. And those people need the time to work together to identify the needs and come up with solutions. We've been talking about time schedules and teacher schedules for years and years and years. And unfortunately, due to the setup of a single middle high school, teacher schedules don't always align and they don't have time to work together. So whatever you guys decide to do or whatever we decide to do, remember that teachers need time to work together and right now that's not always afforded to them.
Thanks, Brad.
Teresa?
First of all, I just want to thank you guys for inviting all of us to the meeting. I do have quite a few notes and comments, but I'm not going to necessarily take all the time to do that now, but I would kind of just kind of reiterate most of what you've heard from all of the staff. I'm pretty much in agreement with. I think we need to really look at more of actual hard data, thinking about the entire whole child and what a single test day might look like. And also not using just the perceptual data. Because I, I do feel that some of, and again, we don't have access to everything that was presented tonight, but some of it was a little bit of a hard pill to swallow, knowing how hard we all work for the kids of the district.
Thanks, Teresa.
Sean Robinson?
Um, thank you. I think, just to echo, I think what, what Teresa just said, a lot of folks are working really, really hard. The one thing that I appreciate about the plan in particular is that it tries to, I think, take the work folks are doing in a lot of corners and sort of be explicit about it and really sort of look at at some aspirational components. And I think that's important to think about too, as we look at kind of district goals and long-term. I agree with folks about implementation, about making sure people's voices are heard. I think those are all incredibly vital. And I also want to make sure that folks do get the credit for the hard work they're putting in, and I think both, lots of folks have talked about that too.
Thanks, Sean.
Diane, Steve? Lamisha?
I found it.
I found it, alright.
Yay, I couldn't get it to work. I'm not used to Zoom. I just want to say that many people have said, mentioned some of the concerns that I have, and having not read the documents yet, I would like to do that before I make a comment. So that's all I really would like to say.
Thank you. Lamisha? I had two things in the, Donna Foster said I agree with what Jody said, and Teresa goes, thank you Anne King for bringing up the whole child. Is the M three tag mentioned, she did spell it right. Yeah.
Alright, can we go back to Tom and Bonnie?
Tom, did you have anything?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Just slow on the mute button.
Took a while.
Bonnie, do you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, let's make another run around the board. Julia, anything?
Nope, thank you.
Kayla?
What are, are we trying to decide?
We're going to ask, we're going to ask what he, what he needs from us.
Okay, I definitely think after hearing from teachers and staff that I think something coming a little bit more from them would be personally, I would feel more comfortable with.
Okay, Jim?
Well, I agree with Donna. I mean, I think it's not an easy topic. You know, I think that it's good that we're talking about it though. And I think it's a very big topic. So I think some sort of committee that is formed to report back, and I don't know if it'd be set up like a school board committee and on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. I think that needs to be looked at. But I think in, in terms of this being such a big topic, that maybe we don't lose sight of some small opportunities like taking for instance, the facility thing, since that's one of my main things is, you know, have like maybe math factors on the staircases so that the kids in the elementary school can learn their math facts, or having the angle diagrams on the doors, which we've looked at at facilities before, so they can learn angles just by being immersed in it on a continuous basis. Or like for a kid who may be really good in, or interested in history or, or reading, but not good in math, bringing in some of like the philosophy of math as opposed to just doing like algebra and the higher grades. So putting a, like an historical perspective on that might help improve their buy-in to the whole thing. And that would, I guess, also go vice versa, if you who likes math, not so much interested in history or, or reading, you could turn that situation around to help have them buy into the subject. And I would also like, you know, to hear, have Holly hear from more what Holly has to say.
Alright, so for myself, you know, I, I like the concepts that I was looking at in here, the general concepts, I think are really good. And I, you know, obviously, I think you knew when you probably did the plan that we were going to have to work on it. I wasn't going to be a final thing when we, so, you know, to have everyone do that would be great. So something not necessarily for Kat, but I think more so for Wayne and, and Joe. We talked a while back about how much stuff we have on teachers' plates. And when we looked at the behavioral support initiative, you know, we really didn't want to put anything extra on people, on teachers' plates because we knew there was going to be a lot that they have to do. And, and we've had to reinforce that because of course, you know, there's stuff that we need to have done. So part of that conversation was if we, if and when we introduce new initiatives to look for other things that we could take off the teachers' plates, okay? And I think that obviously we need to do something here, whatever the end plan ends up being is going to be, I think, another back-to-back initiative that's going to really put a lot onto the teachers. So I would ask, I guess, ask slash challenge the superintendent and the principals. You know, if we're going to be moving forward with this, and obviously we're doing pace, obviously we're doing the behavior supports, that that's happening. And whatever we do, you know, here, that we find some stuff to take off of the teachers' plates to give them time to do this. We, we just heard from several people that they need time. And this is going to take time and other stuff that we have to do is going to take time. So I would really ask, you know, that we look and dig deep to see what we can take off their plates to help them.
Can I just?
Yeah, absolutely.
So a lot of this, I think, really pace and the Behavioral Support Committee, Behavioral Support Committee is focusing on building community and continuity and expectations. And pace is focusing on how we deliver instruction, how we're assessing students. The two of those things together, once they're being implemented, I think kind of address what we're trying to address. I know there are, obviously, we have problem areas, we should be always striving to improve. I wonder if having, you know, everyone gets together in their PLC meetings, maybe having them identify what they think our problem areas are in the district and maybe propose some solutions. And then maybe it won't be so, because it is to try and do something gigantic on top of pace and behavioral support. At some point, they're going to start butting heads.
Well, yeah.
Because it's too much of the same thing.
Right, and I think that they can all support each other.
Right.
But I think it's going to be a little while before we realize exactly how they can support each other. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It makes sense in my, sense in my head, but I know it makes sense.
Well, and their goals will support this, but obviously not until we're implementing it.
Right.
So I think, and there is definitely, you know, we have areas we can improve in. I think maybe having people who have been kind of in the trenches doing the thing, getting their input on what they feel problems are really would be beneficial. And I think would give us more of a direction to go in.
Right, so the only other thing that I had was with the task force, obviously we're going to need to figure that out. I'd really like to put that, I, I do want to hear what your recommendations are, because I know you wanted that last month. But I also do want to, you know, put that out there to see who wants to be involved in that. I would honestly like to see some people on this particular task force that we don't see on a lot of the other committees and groups. I would like to hear some different voices, because we are talking about doing some different things, so some different perspectives would be good. Sure, and, you know, and I would honestly like, on this particular one, like have the board have the final say on what the end makeup of that task force is. Julia, did you have something?
I was just going back to, after listening to the teachers and, and agreeing a lot with what Jim and Kayla said, I think our first step is certainly to get the feedback and to get the buy-in and, you know, it's out there, everybody's requested all the information we're looking for, that's going to take a while to digest. And then maybe read, digest, sleep on it a little bit, and then, and then communicate with each other and amongst them, you know, in, into the appropriate channel. So I don't think we're at a place we could set smart goals and start really, I, I think it's so big. And we talk about the teachers already having so much in their plate, it kind of goes back to what I said earlier, is that maybe if we could, yes, this is our long-term seven-year goal, but let's make it something that is approachable first, and especially after the year everybody's had, and the first step of that is getting the feedback and the buy-in and allowing the voices to be heard.
So I guess that the, we have to wrap up because we're at time. So my question would be, Wayne, what do you need from us tonight?
So it sounds like, I mean, I think I have a sense of, of where the board wishes us to go and we'll come, we'll come up with some recommendations on the 14th relative to what a task force makeup might look like, not moving on it, but, you know, I mean, special educators or support staff, with all of that. But tonight, all I need is a motion to accept the report, so it'll be part of the record. And I don't think you want to do more than that tonight, to be honest. And then we, we know, we don't want to overwhelm anyone. We have resources, we have a board that cares and listens, we have the expertise to solve problems, we know that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we don't want to create problems in our effort to solve problems. So we'll move cautiously, carefully, and, and always take the voices of everybody, all of the people in this organization who we care about. And that's everybody. So I hope people feel that, and I think the board suggested that in this very process. Sometimes in some districts, this all happens, and, you know, a room, the board and a couple administrators, and there you go.
Yeah, that's not the way it works. I don't think that works.
No, it doesn't. I've done it that way, it doesn't work. So I'm really happy that, that you've taken this time, but I think at this point, it's kind of reflection, time to build feedback. Information out and we can move forward. Important pieces, once we have a task force, we can delegate a bit of this stuff.
Yep.
And make some move forward. And of course, the big news is we do have money to do any of this. We are working hard not to obligate the district relative to the cliff that would happen when the money's gone. So we don't want to put anything in place that you're going to have to spend. But there's a lot of like the PD and stuff that we could build capacity, we also want to build efficiency. So in both of those cases, I think the, the task force is a big help at first, the money's going to be really perfect. Well, two of this is beyond belief. So a motion to, to accept the report. And that'll be part of our record tonight. Alright?
I'll make that motion, accept.
What does accepting the report mean?
Doesn't mean you agree with it, but it does, it means that there's not some of something in the report that is contrary to reality. And that rarely happens. If someone were to say, for example, I'm going to build this, and here's a report that you've asked for, and it says that your buildings are totally unsafe and therefore you tear them down, but you may not agree with that. I think the, the fact you accept the report doesn't mean you agree with the aspects, some aspects of the report.
So we have a motion to, to accept the report. Do we have a second? Right. There's no second, the motion will fail.
I just, for it to be public record, I don't feel comfortable.
Yeah?
Because the amount of information here, instead of emailing it to all staff, I'm gonna put it on OneDrive. That, so all staff will be able to look at it, because um, just the staff that had requested Kat's report, that's a, a large report, and it took a lot. So I think I'm just gonna put everything on OneDrive, and then those who want to look at it can look at it. Does that sound acceptable?
Sure.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, thank you.
So we have the motion. Um, you, because we got the, we got the report that we asked for, because it is something that we are looking to do, even if it's not exactly this. Um, we, we got the initial presentation that we have specifically requested, so I will second the motion.
I would agree with that, but.
Any discussion? I mean, I, obviously, we're not accepting it as any kind of final thing, there's stuff that has to be worked on, but we were given something that we asked for. So that's the basis of my second. Is there any discussion? Julia?
Kayla, I would just speak to what I believe your concerns are, and just remember when you vote to accept this, it's um, something that we asked for, it's not something that we presented or is representative of us. We're just accepting, we're accepting.
Well, it is part of the record. This is a public meeting, it's part of the record.
Right, no, no, I said it's not something we presented.
Correct.
It's something we're accepting that we requested, and it doesn't represent, I feel like Kayla's kind of concerned that it looks like the board is saying this is how, how we feel, and this is what we're thinking, and this is what we're saying. And I was just saying, we're just accepting the report, right?
Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Alright, three to one, motion carries. Alright, at that, where if, if there's anything final anyone has, and then we're gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
Uh, just thanks, everybody for being here.
Yeah.
For joining.
Yep.
Absolutely, thank you for the interest, you know, and being involved, that's excellent.
Thank you for all the efforts, and put all that documentation together.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, so um, that, to me, that says that all in favor is aye. Alright, thank you all very much, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Hey Anne? Do you want me to just pick up that packet?
Come on, yeah, I'm here from seven to three.
Okay, rather than, I don't want you to have to go to all the trouble and print it out and all that, I mean, to email it and print it out, whatever works best.
Yeah, I have the, I have the copies here that were given to me, so I have those.
Okay, so it's easiest for you if I just pick them up. I'll just swing over at some point and get them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye.